Members of the public, welcome to this meeting of the Development and Control and Licensing Committee. May we have apologies, please?
Apologies have been received from Mr Hollis and Mrs Cartwright.
And Mrs Cartwright.
Thank you very much indeed, thank you. Before I head on to minutes, a couple of things. One is the order of the agenda. In the interest of efficiency and logic, I intend to take item 765 in that order. In other words, it will not be as greedy because item 6 actually logically comes before item 5, which is discussed in briefing. And in the interests of members of the public, I'm sure don't necessarily wish to listen to a long debate, if it should be a long debate, enforcement. And the second thing is, we have a member of the public who wishes to video proceedings. I see no reason why this shouldn't be acceptable. If anyone feels unglued around it, he or she is welcome to leave the meeting if you feel the same time, but I know nobody would do it at all. Okay. Thank you. So if we can hand the minutes for flows and seconded, please.
Both.
Just passing seconded, Mr Dale, and all those in favour. And abstentions, please. I think that was just about carried, yes. Right, sorry, I'm sorry. No. In reference, Mr Doherty.
Mr James, 2014/04/59, the upline of surgery. I am on first-hand terms with the rector, which is Canon Rachel, who lives next door, but I will declare a person, we're not prejudicial, as say we have simply acquaintances rather than socialising friends, practical questions.
In my mind. And I can declare an interest on that item because my family own property immediately adjacent to it. I will leave the meeting and ask the vice-chairman to take on that boy. Thank you. Item 3, petitions, questions.
No, Mr Chair.
Thank you. And declarations related to planning applications.
No, Mr Chair.
Thank you very much. So we will now move to item 7 on the business agenda, the first of the applications, which is the block one, Mr Doherty.
Thank you, Chairman. This is an application for the approved reserve matters following the original outline permission for the alternative development. And as set out in the report, there are a limited number of issues that are worth consideration in terms of reserve matters application. So this aerial photograph is just to set the scene as to where we are. The red line here coming through the site is the main spine road that's been approved and is now constructed and open for access all the way through now. This is the phase that Beltway are developing, this is the phase that Charles Church are doing, and this is the phase one halt on the development where the spine road runs through the down through the old shed round. And the site of this application is just to the north of this existing tree belt in this area here. And there is a road that runs between the railway site and this site, which is a continuation of the employment land, a state road. And to the south of the site, in this location, is the site for the local centre, which we do have an application for at the moment, but likely to fall to someone before it comes before you for consideration. This plan again really just to show you where the line of the spine road is, which is this blue line on this occasion, this is from the design code, and just to show you that this site affords and faces on to the spine road on its western elevation. This copy of the master plan for the development that was attached to the outline commission, again it shows the site to the north edge line, north of the local centre. And this is a plan that was in the approved design code, that again was attached to the outline commission, which showed indicative building sites throughout the development. And you'll see generally, it's not very clear, it's not being very clear on the original, but generally there's green and blue tint on the map. The green areas either side of the spine road are two-storey maximum, and then generally running up through the spine road, it's two to three stories. And this particular site is within that blue area where it's indicated it's three-storey. That's the application location plan, so to again just to put in context, the green line there is the boundary of the employment land here, the Bowden Office Park here, phase one market fleet in here. The site for the retirement village is here, but there's no application for that yet. This is the revised layout that was received today, and you'll see a copy of that attached to the agenda. We had, as you'll see from the original report, sought some amendments to the bin store, the provision of the cycle store. This plan arrived this morning. The respective people with the applicants and the agents have been on holiday recently, so it was a last-minute plan this morning. I think that maybe the further work needs to be done on the size and location of both of those facilities, and I'll come back to that in the recommendation at the end. So this is the larger scale plan that indicates, it indicates where those two stores now are located on the latest plan, and it also details of the landscape and the tree species and the shrub species that will be around the site, because as you'll see, landscape is one of the reserve matters. That's the elevation to the north, which could be this elevation here, which is opposite the lock fleet's affordable housing as part of the Beltway scheme, that's the north elevation. And this is the west elevation based on the spine road, which would be the elevation at the bottom. It's proposed to use red brick materials. It was specified to be concrete tile, grey tile roof. The applicant has confirmed that they're happy to change that to a clay tile that is designed to look like a proper natural slate. So that's the latest specification for the roof. And that's a typical layout, that obviously the first floor, but all three floors are very similar, some of the units, as you'll see from the report, there's 18 two-bed units within the block and 12 one-bed units. And you can see there's a two-bed unit, two beds, one bed in there, one bed in the middle, two around the edge. This is a photograph looking towards the southern part of the site, which is bound by this tree screen. This site here is the site for the local centre. So in this application, this building before each line would be to the north of that tree belt. And then that's looking back down, the other way down the spine road, these are the houses that have been built as part of the Beltway scheme. And that is the abelitical area, which is crowded, the park in this part of the current site, and the local centre is beyond that. And just right in the distance there, you can see the buildings on the Bowden Office Park. This is the northern elevation of the site. It's, most of it is covered in self-set saplings at the moment. They would not clearly have to be removed, and we're going to see if we can arrange for some of those to be transplanted during the alternate of other parts of the development. It seems a shame to lose all of those, there's some ash which may not survive, but there are other native species that may be worth it. That's a composite view from the western elevation, so this would be, the building would be here, that's the tree belt to the south. Again, just a little bit further north, looking back to the site here, the local centre down there. And just to give you an illustration, that is the similar designed, similar scale block that's just about complete now on phase one, where the spine road runs between that block and these houses on this side of the road. The spine road will continue through down this field down to the junction of Hutton's Drive. That gives you an idea of scale, there's a sort of one and a half storey flat over a carriage next to it there, that is the two-storey houses opposite, which have a similar relationship with the current proposal today, is by the way, lock fleet need this operation. So those are the main issues, they're set out in the report. As I said, it's reserve matters only, so that there are only those four issues that are up for consideration. You'll see there's, there are some other issues raised in there, but I'll just come for those on the next slide. The design is considered to be appropriate, it's not dissimilar from those that have been approved elsewhere. There's likely to be more of them in phase 10 and 10 on the old shed round. It's in accordance with the design code, the sort of plan that shows the three-storey height. There's also the three-storey block on Main Road, Barnacle as well, on the corner, I don't know whether members will be familiar with, so three-storey is not unusual in that location. Landscaping is confirmed, native trees and shrubs. And then those other issues which you'll see from the reports have been raised, the colleagues were talking about the ones in the August night budget survey, but that's something that the applicant will have to deal with under the provisions of the outline commission. They'll just have to deal with some sort of conformist statement to deal with that. In terms of the bins, the western amenities section confirm that in a scheme like this, they won't, each unit won't have an individual grey, grey and black bin, and will have a slightly back as a little bit communal skip within the bin area that those bags will get into. As I said earlier, that's something that we probably still need to, need to bottom out to get the fine detail of. There's no affordable housing provision in this particular proposal, but again, the section 106 deals with the overall provision of affordable housing. The applicant needs to comply with that. And that residential amenity, it's not really considered that across the road, there would be any major impact on those houses, because it's a very common occurrence when you get a three-storey block, opposite two-storey houses, and the blocks are not set right into the back of the building, if you're saying. So the recommendations for approval, subject to, or recommended, you possibly delegate authorities officers to resolve the bin and cycle parking issues, and then further to the recommendation in the agenda, just to the main condition on further to include the latest landscape details that have arrived, and consequently, any revised details for the bins and the cycle parking. Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, members. I'm sorry that we've already got one there committed, one there committed. Not your honour, Mr Dale. Do you want to start?
Yeah, I'll start with you then. Phase one and phase nine and 10, where we're having similar developments, are there the same sort of parking arrangements on phase one that's already been approved and phase one and 10 that's coming?
Phase nine, we don't have any plans for yet. Phase 10 has just been submitted, not really analysed to that extent, but certainly the block that's shown in the photograph of that's been built on phase one, it has the same parking ratio, there's 24 spaces, 24 units in that block.
I just wonder whether they're compounding what we're accepting tonight, you know, that there'll be, I can see if we're going to have, my mind, we're going to have a parking problem in the new 1.2 spaces per unit, and if we don't have two more units further down, we're going to come and get all the towers, we're going to do.
Yeah, well, Chairman, I've got to say in the report that the situation with regard to what was approved at the outline stage, that we are bound by that, it does talk about an average of one and a half, and as you've seen, the calculation sets out that there are an average of, I think, 10.6 over the scheme that's been approved so far, so.
I thought, sorry, I thought, I thought I read it as, that if we allow this car parking to market, that would enhance the number of spaces for the large developers, if it would be there.
Well, I think what was intended by that comment in the report, is if we stick to roughly one space per unit in this scheme, it will allow the average to provide more parking spaces for the three, four-bedroom houses, which are probably more likely to need them than much this scheme would.
I'll play for the members, Chairman.
Mr King. Thank you, Chairman. First of all, on things I've been appointed to be made, I accept the fact that there was an overall scheme of one and a half spaces for, for going across the overall scheme, but it does talk about additional spacing on the street, and the street signs there are laying very little allowance for that. We have a lot of this planned next door, which we're not going to have to deal with tonight, but we have a large block next door, which is the likelihood of flats, so there's some sort of shopping precinct next door with a similar problem. So the compound of these two adjacent facilities, I think will lead us to the major parking problem on site. And to have a one-for-one ratio on that particular collective development of the two adjacent, I don't think it's going to work, I don't think there's any problem. And I firmly make the point, until we have this on the site at the moment, that why I say this, when we talk about cars, well, we've got to accept the fact that we do get a number of residents who for their living have white vans, green vans, pink vans, probably in life, but they have vans that come on site as part of their family business, and that causes a greater problem. We did talk about this on the previous report on the site, and I think that these sort of developments, we're not just talking about car parking problems, we need sometimes to talk about the works van or even other vehicles which would become your load. I don't think the car parking is big enough, and I think we've got to deal with both developments in a similar way to two adjacent developments there, because the spill over will happen in both directions. And that's with a very good parking management system, the temptation for residents to park on either parking facility, I think will be great, and I think we'll see a spill over in either direction. But that's my first one. The second one is, I really am concerned that yet again, we're seeing affordable homes being backed to the one location. There was an opportunity here for some of the homes in these developments to be affordable, rather than what appears to have been happening there, which is the one that suggests this, which is yet to come to us, will see a line of affordable homes in one location. And I can't see anybody for the one reason, we've said all the way through, we want to see affordable homes integrated in the community, spread across the development, and not have a great block of them together. And it does look, and I've worked with designers here on handling affordable homes, he thinks he's going to look with in the next development, on what sort of block rate are we going to see. I also note that we've got Coventry, Langley Parish Council, we've got Coventry, Mowton Town Council, but this is in Noyon, it's actually in Barnacle Parish meetings area. And I'm very mindful of the fact that having had one meeting with the residents of the village, some of the new residents, and they're starting to engage, I'm just concerned in terms of consultation, whether or not Barnacle Parish Council recognises their responsibility there for this large development, and that about 100 homes now occupy it, and whether or not we're getting them involved in consultation. Because I am being made aware, there are one or two complaints from residents on the new estate, of some of the newer developments happening. And I think the one that is 130 degrees, which is almost complete, has already raised some concerns about where did this come from, why didn't we ever have it, now they're bidding on the board property. I think some of this is in broad terms, in the developer's hands to explain it. But I think we've got a consultation deficit here. I'm not saying we could hold on this application, but I think we need to try and engage with Barnacle about how when they're consulting on planning, they're consulting that wider group, which is now the new development. But I would like to share that a feedback from officers on the affordable homes and the parking issue, as to whether we are entirely comfortable with being proposed.
So I think the response on this one was that there were possibly management problems with having a mix of affordable units within a block such as this, but I think they're not provided elsewhere. But as I say, unfortunately, it's not a reserve matter that we can hang on the back of this decision on, right? It's something that the section 106 agreement requires them to comply with, and they will have to do that, by whatever means can be agreed outside of dealing with this particular application. I'm not sure, I don't have the figures in front of me as to what the overall affordable housing provision is so far, and what is still to come, but I think in phase 10, there is a fairly number dotted about throughout that phase, they're not all in one block. And I anticipate that phase nine will be something similar. In terms of the parking and the relationship with the local centre, indications are that that application is going to be withdrawn, because officers have expressed some concerns about many aspects of it, not least the parking and the access and the number of units and so on. So I think that application is likely to be withdrawn, hopefully, or if there was the opportunity to negotiate something a bit better on that particular site. So I'm not sure, again, I'm not sure we can relate it to this one in particular.
Mr King.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I hear what's said about the affordable homes, but we have managed to negotiate with the developer in terms of the previous affordable homes, in terms of the consensus that they wanted to see it both together. And I've said this in similar manner, you know, we have, we've tried to spread the affordable homes to the big estate, and some success has been achieved there. This is going to be extremely disappointing if we see never affordable homes in this block, and one next door ends up being a live proportion of affordable homes. I can't see why management is an issue. This is to do with affordability, it's not to do with management, it's affordability of properties. So I think there's more work to be done on that, and I can't, personally, I won't be supporting this on that basis alone. And I see the parking is on the point as well, I think the two sides are adjacent, separated in my head, and I personally do not think that 30 places is going to do the job for us and that community on that side. And until we've got the plan next door and we can see exactly what the overall picture is, I'd be reluctant to give this one permission.
Mr Lam. Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, just. With regard to the parking as well, I look at the parking level of the report of the highways department, and it says parking is insufficient and recalls for congestion on surrounding highway. Now, which is pretty clear cut, and then we go back, I think, if you actually, how do we make this policy? And we've got these quoted, planning guidelines, obviously HT4 provision will not be counted for development, which would be likely to result in an increase in parking on the roads and suited for such use if it would cause a rollover, if it has a big detriment to an entity. Now, reading that HT4, I suggest that our old highways planning advice actually provides ways to suggest that this application isn't, isn't under the calls from HT4. I don't know what the highways advice comments on.
Just give me a second. Do you want to come back?
Okay, yeah, I think you're right there, James. I mean, obviously, we've made the comment on that. We're bound by some of the design guidance on there, which is usually the maximum standard for the amount of parking spaces on there, but obviously Claire, who's one of the control officers, has looked at these sites in quite a lot of detail, and has consistently made the point that we would push for as much parking as possible. And we've seen in some areas already where we're bound by the maximum standards that have already been developed, and they are pushing the boundaries of the maximum parking that's on there to this degree. But we're seeing some issues with that at the moment, so I mean, I understand by the comments that Claire's put in there, and also what you pointed out about the policies there.
Thank you. Do you want to continue, Mr Lam?
On that one, if it seems to be a significant problem to the highways, and then the judge with the plan, so obviously, if any officer could sort of offer an explanation as to why the, that HT4 has been met with this development?
Mr Lam.
I have to go back to the terms of the outline permission, and the restrictions that we're limited to in determining the application. Whilst the layout is a consideration, it does follow the approved design code that was attached to the outline permission, which is the principal permission, and here we're just reviewing the details, considering the details. Taken into, clearly that policy needs to be taken into account, but it has been approved under a similar parking motion flow inside, without too many questions being raised about it. And it's possibly somewhat difficult to raise to this stage on a single scheme.
I'm letting you run, I'm going to taxi wait.
Well, it's one of the issues that does come to this committee quite a bit with developments, sort of in villages, if there are mistakes being put on, concerns regarding highways issues. And it is always, I'm mindful, that it is harder on, if we went to appeal to, for when the highway parking issues, if highways do really not sufficient, they did say. But I think in this case, we have the highways comments, and I believe, I do share councillor King's concerns regarding the affordable housing, but I would be voting against the opposite evaluation for the parking issue.
Mr Doherty.
Thank you, Mr James. Following on from comments made by previous members, I agree with everything that's been said. When we looked at the outline permission for this site, well, for the previous, for the whole site, I think we were still waiting to see how it would develop, how it was going to grow. And now, this second application for this large development, whilst you can say that the first, the first large development met with the criteria that we agreed, the second application will actually put more pressure on existing parking because of, well, it's going to be happening when the first unit comes online. It strikes me that the fact that the bare minimum has been put into this property, this application, as far as parking is concerned, means that, as in developers, will be washing their hands of where the overspill will be going, and that will be onto the streets around the development. No mention has been made of Langley Parish Council's comments with regards to moving the block into another corner of the site that it's going to be put on to, in order to free up more land, to create more spaces. So perhaps that's something we could look at. I'm personally not sure if sufficient thought has been given to maximising the potential of parking spaces, and then just gone to 1.5, and then fitted the building on to a piece of ground to left. But I believe that if the block was moved, then it would perhaps free up more spaces. I also concur with what councillor King said about affordable houses, this is an ideal opportunity for affordable housing to be made. It'll also be built before any other affordable housing on this development will come on stream. So it means that people who are looking for affordable housing will have options a lot earlier than if they have to wait until the second tranche. So, and I concur with everything that's been said, as mentioned previously, I would like to see if something, if there is any movement in the location of the building in order to free up more spaces. I am very concerned about parking, our highways department have voiced very strident concerns, parking is insufficient and causes destruction and congestion on surrounding highway, and you can't get more obviously sort of against it than that. So I say I'll wait here with the officers, but I, I'm in our problems. Could you insist?
If I could just comment on the parking. I think we need to recognise that what the council secured through the design code is going back almost into a slightly different plan nearer now, where we were talking about parking restraint. And a lot of councils are trying to reduce the amount of parking, following central government advice and the belief, misplaced belief, I think, a lot at the time, that misplaced belief that that stops people owning cars, which of course doesn't. But we are bound by it. We've signed up to a design code, it's buried in the planning permission for the site, it's embedded in it. This is only a reserve matter, the principles are not at issue in the slightest.
This is only a reserve matter, the principles are not an issue in the slightest, or it's denied. The difficulty is if there's a refusal on car parking grounds, is under the 2.69 spaces on the committed scheme, the developer only has to write an average of 1.5. If the developer can show that he's not going to go below that average, indeed, he's probably going to be, I would suspect, he's going to be running public. How do we show that there's a problem? Because we're actually completely providing overall, quite probably more parking than we've actually signed up to. In a sense, to have more parking on here, we would have to try to make the case we're not going to get the average of 1.5, which would justify us, justify us asking for more. I think if we were getting into a bill situation on that, it would be extremely difficult for the council to prove its case. I fully understand where the highways comments are coming from, and if we were looking at a normal, full application on an unencumbered site, not get approved, I think that's right and proper. We would, as your planning officers would be asking you to maintain the current policy standards and go for a higher level. But that's not where we are. Most of the rules that we've got worked on this site are already fixed and agreed by us at the moment. So, you know, I can only do his backup or device, and it's not what he's given you, but it will, the parking arrangements in our new are entirely satisfactory, and we are very, very difficult to prove in other ones.
Can I come back? There's another issue which I'm concerned about, the trees. And are, is there any way of knowing which trees are going to have to come down in order to build this? Because there are a lot of trees on that particular piece of ground. So have we got details? Are there any mature trees that are going to be coming down, or is it just those self-sanced things?
No, it's just the younger trees within the site, the large tree belt at the back is, was always intended to remain. This development would be located to the north of that. As I say, I would like to see if we can get some of those transplanted during the planting season, because it's going to be shown to just plant over and waste them. But whether they're anywhere else within the overall development, they can be located. I don't know, there's plenty of open spaces where they could be replanted.
Mr. Lam.
Thank you, Jerry. I started to have a bit of a bin store. Sorry. The bin store looks on here like two car parking spaces, that you might get, even the big bins, you might get very many in there. And if it isn't adequate for what the complex needs, where do we go from there?
Yeah, as I've explained, that, in terms of that planned earlier, right, upon closer examination, it looks as though we might have to do some more work on that, which is why we were suggesting that officers be allocated to resolve that issue.
So, just that, to my opinion, you could move up to six spaces on there, to accommodate the bins.
It's unlikely that we're looking to approve a plan that loses any more spaces.
Mr. Lam, is any member who hasn't spoken so far down the research, Mr. Cross, is there down the research? Yeah.
Thank you very much indeed, Jerry. I'd just like to raise a few points, and I think sort of one of the key things is that the issues we're having with parking resolved, it could be basically because it's difficult to look at the scheme in parts. Whilst I appreciate that that has to be done for an application this size, I see I'm concerned about parking on site. I'm also concerned by the lack of visitor spaces, and I think that some of the numbers given are unrealistic. Sort of following on from Councilor Ox's point, I'd be very keen to see some of the trees and planting chunks there to other areas in the site. But again, sort of, I still feel there are a number of issues with this application, and I'm not sure that sort of, I feel I can make a decision tonight on this particular application, given the information that's in front of us at this time, particularly when the applicant submitted this this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Cross. Okay, so, to me, it is one interesting conversation. We are up against policy. And in the past, I have mentioned in council that our policies should only be guidelines, and in fact, they've always been ratified that they are guidelines. Because here we seem to be high ground, unable to do what should be done. The other issue is, a little bit of history here, we have two departments, one saying one thing, one saying the other thing. And I think it's unfortunate that in the outline planning process, these matters were not fully trashed out between those departments. With this application, the, I think the first thing I noticed was the use of the screening in the front of the building using birch. Such a large building, we need something more substantial than, I think, a probably silver birch. If trees that are going to come out have been replanted, and our oak or ash, I'm sure that would improve the environment around those houses. Parking, anything else at the moment? Thank you very much.
Mr. Ox.
Well, certainly, Mr. Parsons. I'd just like to follow up on Mr. King's thing about the parking, my grid with the vans and stuff like, I mean, you only have to go around all modern estates now, see them absolutely, yeah, even in estandards, vans parked on verges, ripping up verges. And I think this would just end up with all types of vans parked along the side of the main road there. And I just think it's not suitable at all, and the number of parking spaces, because most people will work, and I think you need more than one or two of it anyway.
Thank you, Jerry. Yes, again, given the constraints this ground talking about, looking at, when it comes to cycle stores and bin stores, I don't know if it would be feasible to talk to the applicants about actually perhaps losing an element, perhaps a flat in the middle on the ground floor, opening it up, making it a passageway through perhaps, and people can store their bins there, rather than having a solid block. And that would actually free up more space and allow storage of bins and the like in a much more user-friendly way, and perhaps give sufficient space for every bin that there will be demand for from all the flats that we're now going to do. So again, that's something I'd actually like to hear from officers about that. I think there are faults in the design which needs addressing.
Well, as I said earlier, there is, the intention is that a scheme like this would have a single large skip, everybody works out their own bin. So I don't think it would be appropriate to have the storage of those sort of facilities within the building, so certainly it's not normal for them to be within the building. The schemes before you is just for consideration, we can't redesign it tonight, so you need to bear that in mind, as always. Just go back to another couple of points that were made about moving the building back to try and free up more parking space. I don't think that would be likely to result in more space, because you've got a finite amount of space that is open space, and a finite amount of space that's taken up by the building. I think from an urban design point of view, the last thing you would want to do is to set the building back and have all the car parking in front of it. You need a building on that corner that provides a strong focal point, which addresses the street, and I think officers wouldn't be in a position to recommend something that did that the other way around. So I think it's important to keep the parking secondary to the appearance of the building on a corner like that.
Mr. Lam.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Can I just ask, Officer, in relation to the road going north across the site, and where the access will be, if it is believed that road is suitable for residents to park there? I want to just have a...
Just go quickly back to the, to the layout, I remember, that's, let's get this read down, it's on the... This, this is the main spine road through the development. That is effectively a side road, and the access is there off that side road. These are the rear of these properties here, so these properties don't face onto that street. Beyond that point in this direction, that is an industrial road, because this, all this area here is the employment land, which has the benefit of a commission for employment development. So beyond that point, there would be no residential properties, so whether there would be scope for parking on the road there, remains to be seen, it depends on what particular development comes coming on that side.
My question is, sort of, if it is suitable, parking, because I, if we go back to HT4, to make it to that permission, which will likely result in an increase in parking on roads unsuited for such use, if it would cause, so it's, I think it's key to determine if that road is just be suitable for overspill parking, because, I think the second part of it is if it would cause a road safety hazard, which I refer that down, referring to the highways, which, so the development will cause obstruction and congestion on surrounding highways, which for me would offer, would offer weight to, to say it is a road safety hazard, if it is deemed that road is unsuitable, so.
Mr. Ox. Yeah, well, I think a lot of it depends on whether parking does occur. If parking occurs in accordance with the highway code, which you are legally allowed to, entitled to do so on a highway, then that won't pose a significant risk by your straight piece of road. Now, if you have cars parking all around the junction there, then that may cause an issue, and that's, I think, we have to look at. But there's certainly room within the development for some overspill parking onto the highway.
Mr. Cross.
Well, Mr. Jerry, we've, we've fractured now. I'm likely to propose that we accept the officer's recommendation. You know, we may have, but then we've got to learn and learn from it.
Very well. Yes, I'm going to take the debate forward, other than the one I'm not seeing presented at the moment.
Thank you, Jerry. With that and the spine road and the, that road going down there, can we just see the site to plan? No, the whole site, sorry.
Oh, that's not the whole site. That is the whole site.
Yes, no, I mean, the whole, whole area. Well, I'm trying to get that there, there, we've got, I've lost myself, I went the same way. Yeah. So that's, that road off the top there will be probably as busy as the spine road, when you've got the garage down there, and same reserves at the end. So it could in fact become a busier road than the spine road.
Okay. Mr. King and Mr. Lam.
Thank you. If we take the state of the garden, I accept what I was just saying, that has to be somebody who applies, but can we, before you just move forward to the one that's saying is the service centre? Because the report talks about the service centre being another 30. That service centre that's indicative of there is far more than 30. And therefore, I think that it can be double 30 for that sort of difference.
That's, this, this layout is the current submission, which has 30 units in it, above the retail unit.
Right, so you've got retail and 30 units. So what's the parking that's indicative of there?
I'm going to bring the legal officer in for a second.
I'm just concerned, members, we do have a proposal on the table, and yet we're carrying on debating, or you are carrying on debating. There's also been mention of some issues that, as your officers have already pointed out, are outside books on the table before you this evening, and that's really what we must focus our minds to. Also, your officers have informed you that the parking, at the ratio it appears to be, and I think it would be helpful if officers just confirmed that ratio to you in a moment, does appear to sit with the urban design code. So I just wanted to remind you of those points. We do have, Councilor Cross, you did make a proposal, are you happy to withdraw that whilst debate continues?
No.
Or do you seek?
No, we're not bidding, we're not bidding anywhere.
That be dealt with?
Yes, I would like to be dealt with.
No, because I'm so much in trouble, but we must insist that that is the way that it's, which it is dealt with this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before I ask for a second of this, if there is a second there, I do wish to make a couple of comments, because they are concerned with scale and appearance, which are part of this. And I recognize, and I raised this in the briefing, that the story night policy is there. I think we run a very real risk if we do decide to approve this tonight, that we are building in effect a Blundstone Road in Oak. When, if you recollect those of us who were there, the original submission for the whole site, and this house, request put in that manner, we had a design statement, and we had not only artist impressions, but photographs of the type of dwelling and the sort of layout. We were promised pounds, and we're getting peccy, and I think it is completely wrong. I'm going to ask you if there is a second, what the difficulty I find with this, and I'm as much to blame as anybody.